Danielle, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me? Did you hear me?
Okay.
Danielle, if you can hear us, we're just trying to make sure we can hear you. Can you give me a test?
Okay. I was about to tell them, people sit out there and wonder what it is we're doing. I was about to tell them. Is the microphone on? I don't, I don't see lights anywhere.
Danielle, would you do a test of you speaking so?
Testing one. Can y'all hear me? Okay, good. If you're sitting there and you're wondering why we haven't done anything yet, Danielle is not here tonight and she's on Zoom, but we can't talk to her yet and she can't hear us and we're trying to fix that. So it'll be just a minute, if you don't mind. Thank you for being here. I guess it is. While we have time to kill, I was told after about three meetings ago that at times they couldn't hear me talk and at other times I was too loud. So if I get too loud, I'll know it because people will be covering their ears up. If you can't hear me or any of the rest of us when we're talking, raise your hand and let me know. And this was a good friend of mine told me that, said, "I'm just telling you because I think you need to know. We can't hear you all the time." And I can talk really loud. I can fix that.
Hi, this is Danielle. Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can hear you. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Are you ready? Thank you for your attendance. It is the July 26th meeting of the Rockport City Council. And I will call this meeting to order and ask you to stand and sign, pledge allegiance with us. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the republic, one nation, and our individual. At this point, I want to call the roll of the wards, to be sure that we have got the right number of people in a quorum here. Ward one? Ward two?
Here.
Ward three?
Here.
Ward four?
Here.
Mayor, here. This is one of the things that's kind of fun to do. It's been done with this particular proclamation before, but we're doing it again because the lady that we want to honor this evening has been with us a long time and we're going to miss her smiling face at the Chamber of Commerce. And I hope we don't ever have to miss your smiling face around town. So Diane, if you'd come up just a second. Somebody said you don't have to read this whole thing, but we're going to talk about it just a little bit. Say, Diane, thank you. I thought I could talk loud enough for y'all to hear me, but the recorder probably can't. Sorry about that. I forget. Anyway, Diane has been in the city of Rockport nearly as long as I have. She's been with the Chamber of Commerce. She's been one of the hardest working people that I have ever seen. She and Mike both work diligently at what they do. But she has been so faithful with the Chamber of Commerce in representing our city and getting people to come to our town and we get more tourists. We have businesses have come in because they were invited and worked with by the Chamber of Commerce. And I have felt like the whole time she's here, if there was a question that had to do with business or anything else, where one used to be or where it was now or whatever, that I could call down there and talk to her and she knew. But she and Mike have been good friends to the city. They have been very good to us and the Chamber is going to have a challenge getting by without them, although Ms. Jumper will do a great job down there, I'm sure, and she's looking forward to it. But I appreciate her. This proclamation was signed by the county judge, the mayor of the town of Fulton, and by me at an earlier date, and I appreciate Diane and we look forward to working with you on other projects as we go along. Thank you so very much. If you were here a few meetings ago, you saw me not put on any glasses and I couldn't read the small print here, so I borrowed my old glasses with me. Next item on the agenda is citizens to be heard. At this time, comments listed, limited to three minutes, will be taken from the audience, from persons who have signed the speaker's card located on the table at the back of the training room of the service center and delivered to the city secretary before the meeting begins. Or written comments received by 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting on any subject matter that is not on the agenda. It will be read, summarized in the minutes of the meeting. Persons wishing to address the council who have registered using the citizen participation form will have up to three minutes to speak. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, council may not discuss or take action on any item that has not been posted on the agenda. While civil public criticism is not prohibited, disorderly conduct or disturbance of the peace as prohibited by law shall be caused for the chair to terminate the offender's time to speak. Do we have any items for people, for items not on the agenda? Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is consent agenda. All consent agenda items listed are considered to be routine by the city council will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Does anyone have any desire to remove any item from the consent agenda? All right.
I take the motion to accept the consent agenda.
I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mayor? Sorry.
Yes?
Mayor, can you hear? I wanted to pull item six, please.
I'm sorry, I can't understand you, Danielle.
Item six?
Item six? Okay. We'll move item six from the consent agenda. Other than item six?
I rescind my motion. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda except for item six.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion or question? We'll vote? One, yes.
Aye.
Ward two? Ward, ward three, ward four? I couldn't hear you, Danielle. Sorry about that. If I don't hear you and miss you, we'll holler at me again. All right, that would be time for item six. Deliberate and act on adoption of a resolution, amending resolution number 2016-14, the certification and education pay policy listed in pay table. Who's got it?
I'll take it. Mayor, council, you have an existing certification and education pay program and it is updated annually. As staff and I have looked at it, there are a few changes in here. But looking at the current policy versus what we're actually providing to the employees was a little different. We currently have some department heads that have access or are getting certification pay and/or education pay. And that is outside of the current policy. The current policy does not include exempt employees. So to codify that into the policy, that changed. That is the major change. The other change that, that I suggested going through this process was to put a cap of $900 on the total that you can get through certification and/or education pay. 450 for certification pay and 450 for education. Now, I will say in cities that I've served elsewhere, yes, I think, I know how high retention and recruitment as, are as a priority for the council. So, and again, past practice, while it has not always met the policy by providing certification pay and education pay for some of the, the department heads, that's out, again, that's outside of the policy. This is an attempt to bring the policy and practice into unison. If you choose not to make the change for non-exempt employees, I mean for exempt employees and just keep it at non-exempt, I would suggest at least grandfathering in your current department heads who have certification, education pay. And then moving forward, don't offer that to incoming department.
Okay.
And Danielle pulled this off or requested this off, so she may have something else to say.
Okay, Danielle?
No, Richard, I really appreciate the additional background on that and, and working with me through this. The change that, first, let me say this. I, I believe providing a certification pay for our employees is the right thing to do. This is a great way for our employees who are taking on additional duties or improving themselves, which will ultimately improve our customer service, is the right thing to do. My concern with changing to allow for exempted policy or exempt employees is that you're almost over incentivizing perhaps a minimum requirement to do the job. And you normally see that especially in your management type positions. And so that one minor strike through really is what, what raised my attention to it. And then when you look at the fiscal impact, it's not fully clear yet. And I know staff's been working on it, but by adoption of this policy, we're really locking ourselves into some budgetary considerations that we don't have full clarity on yet. So, you know, on the surface, again, I, I support the policy, but I think that there's some unknown or some adjustments that should be considered, as Richard mentioned, for the perhaps exemption of, of director level positions or at minimum, you know, potentially postpone this so we can better get a feel for the fiscal impact. So those are kind of my comments and thoughts as we move through this one.
Thank you. Other comments?
Okay, you got something?
I just wanted to mention that a couple of the directors were hired in at a slightly lower salary and it was included in their hire on documentation that they would also receive the education and/or certification pay. And so I'm not sure, you know, why that old policy wasn't followed. But since I've been here, there's been at least two director level positions added on that in addition to their hourly, their annual salary, they were to receive the additional certification, education pay.
I just wasn't comfortable continuing the practice, not following the policy.
Sure. So the effort that we have going on here is trying to figure out which direction we're going to go in determining certification pay for department heads and so forth. The issue seems to be that at one point in time, when this first came up several years ago, it was at a time that there were employees that were limited in making salary increases because at times we had trouble with doing merit increases because of budget issues. But certification pay was something that would help those people out. At that time, department heads didn't get them. But as you get further along in time, and as Katie said, there are times when you're hiring someone that there's an agreement made. So the question is, do we need to realign it now as Richard has done, or do we need to look at the possibility of tabling this briefly? And looking at other alternatives to what the language is in the policy going forward?
Let me just ask Katie a quick question on financial impact.
Financial impact between the current fiscal year and the proposed budget that you guys have already represented is about $59,671 and some pennies.
And how did you figure that? You just, did you take a look at who was eligible and maxed those folks out?
Correct.
Yes, they were.
We looked at their eligibility and we based it off of 450 cap for education and $450 cap per month for certification pay. So if they were eligible for education pay, they're capped out where they are on education pay. If they were eligible for certification pays in the positions that are listed, then we did calculate it out at what they would be eligible for within the next fiscal year in '22, '23. You will see that slightly increase for '22, '23, '24. Some of our certifications build on each other. You have to have one certification for a period of time before you can move to the next certification. So we base it on what would be available in the next fiscal year.
Okay.
Yes, my concern is to table it. I mean, how much different can we word this if we already have the information? I mean, her concern seems to be the financial impact, which Katie now just had said, so I'm not sure what we'll change.
I don't want to speak for Danielle, but I understand where she's coming from. When someone is promoted up to a director's level position, they usually forego certification pay and/or education pay because it's required to do the job. And in, in the policy as it is, if, if a, if a degree is required to do the job, you aren't to be incentivized for that anyway. So I understand her concern because I, I, I've, that's the way I've operated in other cities. When you reach a certain level, you, you give up your certification pay because usually your, your salary is elevated enough to cover those, what you're being, what you're bringing to the job. Again, I, I think our policy is, is generous. But again, for me, I didn't want to bring this forward knowing that practice does not necessarily meet policy. So this was an attempt to change the policy to, to fit the practice that we've had over the last several years. If council chooses and agrees with, with Ms. Hill that, hey, we should not incentivize directors just for exempt employees, then you scratched the language that we built in because we scratched that section and said, "This applies to every employee." So making every employee eligible for certification and education pay. If you don't want that language, you, you revert back to the existing language. But again, then our practice and policy are at odds. And I would like some direction if council does that. I don't want to take pay away from existing directors because they were hired with that promise. But for future directors, as we bring them on or promote somebody, we need to follow the policy, whichever policy is in existence.
Other questions?
Did we do a, I guess not a salary survey, but any kind of survey on it to get, get our list of where our certification base came from?
He's not here, so I don't want to speak too much in her place. Teresa may know more, but I do know that she contacted surrounding areas.
Okay.
And this was one of the ways in which we were able to help us level up with some of the salary differences.
That's what, if, if we can assist, since we can't give maybe as large of a raise, but if we can help in certification pay to be on par with some of our neighboring areas, now I just want to make sure that's where we got some of our information from.
And we do have, if you look at our job descriptions, most of our job descriptions do not require the additional certifications they suggested, I guess you could say, they prefer. But they're not required. Same thing with the education. Some of them require a, a two-year degree, associate's degree, where we have people in position with a bachelor's or higher. So this is one of the reasons that we're trying to go ahead and bring this to you in addition to, to correcting the process versus policy.
Anyone else has a question, comment? We have a motion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I really appreciate that background. So Katie, if I understand correctly, the anticipated financial impact for next year is going to be approximately $59,000. So my, again, going back, I, I don't think there's a one-size-fits-all. I agree with you, Richard. You shouldn't punish those that are already receiving it. For whatever reason, the, the policy was, was utilized or not utilized in certain ways, but it's, it's almost, you would have to go position by position. Again, if you're hired in at a manager level and you're required to have an associate's degree or a bachelor's degree to qualify for the position, whether you have it or not, and you got the job, you shouldn't be receiving another pay on top of meeting the minimum requirements of your position. And for the other council, mayor, you know, if you calculate this out, $900 per person maxed out, that's almost $11,000 extra a year on top of somebody's salary. That's a big deal. I'm not, I've never worked for an organization that provided certification pay. I think it's a really neat opportunity for us. I'm not, I mean, I hope staff understands. I'm not saying we shouldn't have this and I, and I want to see how we can expand this to better serve our employees and our customers. But I think it's teetering on excessive in certain areas if it's not controlled properly. And again, I think it's those higher wage positions, adding another almost $11,000 on top of their salary for something that they probably should be doing just as part of their job description is something worth discussing. But I'll, I'll support what the council and, and mayor would like to do on this. I, I personally would like to see this postponed and come back with, with some additional detail on how this may impact certain manager or director level positions. But if you guys, you know, want to move forward on our vote tonight, that's, that's okay too. But I, I just wanted to make sure everybody was fully aware of the decision they're making tonight. It's not about adding a couple certificates. It's adding a significant budget impact for next year.
Danielle, one, one point of clarification. This is not a new program. It's an ongoing program. The, the $900 cap was non-existent and it's something I'm suggesting. So a lot of-
Yes, sir, and thank you. I appreciate it.
A lot of the dollars.
And I realize it's not a new program, but, but changing the policy from non, it said, non-exempt employees originally.
That's correct.
And now we're changing it to all employees. That, that's the change.
That, that-
Whether there were exceptions to the cap, that's the change.
In essence, that's the, that's the primary difference. This is not a new program that will add immediately $900 to everybody's paycheck. A lot of our employees are already receiving incentive pay, some of these incentive pays and education pays. And so this is not an automatic $900 addition to their pay. New. So that's why the costs aren't as great from year to year because they're already receiving it. The, the real issue here is the exempt versus non-exempt.
Yes, and thank you for that clarification. I, I, no doubt I misspoke on that, but yeah, that's, that's the change. And then, as Katie mentioned, assuming this goes through, if I understood correctly, we're looking at $59,000 potentially added for our budget next year.
Max.
Would you like to make your concerns in form of motion, Danielle?
I'll make a motion to postpone this item for 60 days for reevaluation and to bring back for council.
I hear a second.
Mayor? We, we do need to adopt the budget with, prior to 60 days, so I, I would ask Danielle to consider a shorter timeframe.
We recommend that we do it by the council meeting on the 9th of August?
I think we can put the information together for you.
Okay. Danielle, would it suit you to move that to the 9th of August?
Yes, sir, that's fine.
Okay. I hear a second.
Could you state the motion again, please?
Thank you.
Danielle, would you repeat your motion, please?
I would like to postpone this item and for reevaluation and bring back for the August 9th city council meeting.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, the, the issue is that it will be brought back before us on August the 9th after further work. Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four? Mayor, aye. Next item on the agenda is public hearings with planning and zoning. Calling to order a public hearing, planning and zoning commission. First item on the agenda is conduct a joint public hearing with planning and zoning commission and considering request for a conditional use permit to allow for a quilt shop located at 2922 Farm Market 1781, also known as Spanish Woods Estates, number five, lot 3B, being 1.148 acres. City of Rockport, Aransas County, Texas, currently zoned R1, single-family dwelling district. Yes, ma'am.
Is a request for a cup for a quilting shop. She originally asked for B1, but that, we decided that wasn't a good idea, so she's going for a cup. And she is here this evening. I just wanted you to know, since your packet, I've gotten two notices in favor of the quilting shop, the cup.
Hello. I have no idea what I'm supposed to do, but. Okay, my name is Starlena Lanier. I have the quilt shop at 2922 FM 1781. I've had it for two and a half years now. And I recently found out that the property I purchased as commercial is not commercial. So I'm trying to save my job, basically. So I'm trying to save my job, basically.
How are you all this evening? My name is Jamie McAllister. I'm a property owner at 826 Holly Road. We originally purchased this property when it was in the county with the plans of moving a manufactured home from a lease in the city to this property for my parents. So recently, we paid to have this trailer moved there without understanding the zoning. And once we had the trailer there set up, inspected, the city came out, basically told us that we were in the wrong and that we needed to approach a, a different avenue.
Good evening, council. My name is Mark Tobias. I own the property at 802 Holly Road. I live on 721 Holly Road. I object to this trailer being put on this property because I believe it's lowering the property value and it's looking more like a RV park back there than a single house, single dwelling family. That's it.
I'm Larry Robinson. I live at 838 Holly Road. I've lived out there for 45 years, way before the bypass was put in. And neighbors move in all the time. The one in question that put the mobile home in there already has several RVs on the same property on two acres. And I don't want it to turn into a trailer park. I'm not understanding why there's so many on such a small lot. I was told I had to have five acres before I could address and have RV in the state, in the city of Rockport. So that's my question and concern is where's this going to keep going when there's more than one, you know, RV, one house or whatever on here, where is it going to turn into a trailer park? How many are you allowed on a property before it's considered a RV park?
I'm only here for the first one. Good evening, mayor. Once again, I'm here on behalf of Mary Ellen Neese, who's traveling in Canada at the moment. And since the Aransas County Council on Aging is our partner, we're their partner in this project, she asked me to step in for her. So once again, the Aransas County Council on Aging will be partnering with the Rockport Center for the Arts to bring pottery lovers to Rockport for the first weekend in February. The 2023 event will be revamped to bring visitors an entirely new experience centered around the historical downtown anchored by the new Rockport Center for the Arts and the various art galleries in the surrounding area. Our intent is to bring an exciting new experience to an already familiar event. Both Saturday and Sunday will be filled with exciting events showcasing talented Texas potters. Our application for hot funds is enclosed with the packet that was submitted by Mary Ellen Neese. And our marketing plan will expand upon our new venue, the Rockport Conference Center, and expanded list of exciting events. Our fiscal year 2023 request towards the promotion of the arts is $5,000 to be used in direct advertising campaign. Thank you.
Want to make sure, as the presenters come up, there's a sheet here that has everybody's requests on it. If you want to take the sheet and as council goes through this, you can fill it in.
Good evening, and thank you for all you guys do. Thankless job, but it's appreciated. I'm Tom Minehausen with the Rockport Fulton Market Days, Artisan Crafted Market. I've got a request into you all to try to bring some more business to the city of Rockport. Each year, we have over 120,000 in attendance. There's over $5 million in sales that happen out there at the market that ends up becoming with Square. It's very convenient, it does end up back in the pockets of Rockport, the city. We have over 500 motel rooms, hotel rooms that we, that are rented between the vendors and the public that comes to see us. We reach over 4 million people in our advertising, and our budget is $50,000 a year that we spend on trying to bring people to the Rockport area to enjoy the environment that we have here and our market. We reach over 80,000 people, I'm sorry, we have over 80,000 people that react to our marketing alone. And we actually reach over 4 million people in our advertising each year. The money I'm requesting is to expand on what I'm doing and to generate more traffic to the town and really to be able to market more across the board, the whole city, not just my market. Right now, I focus on my market with the money I'm spending. I've got a proven track record of generating traffic to this town. Everybody sees it out there every month that I do it. The other one I want to drop a note on is if you haven't gone to rockportfulton.com and previewed their webpage, you have a duty to your constituents to do this. RockportFulton.com is the absolute best represented, representation this community has, from business, restaurant, entertainment, events. Our stunning beauty is all professionally represented on this website, and he's making a request also. I see what he's doing, and I wish I got the kind of traffic he did without having to spend the money on it. He is representing this town in an incredible way. If you put some dollars in his pocket, you'll change the traffic that comes to this town. Thank you very much for your time.
To Bay Education Center.
Hello, good evening. My name is Adriana Riza, and I'm here representing the Bay Education Center. The purpose of our organization is to enhance the public awareness and appreciation of the ecological and economic importance of the Mission Aransas watershed and surrounding bays. The funds that we are asking for will be utilized to help programmatic and visitor operations that enable us to enhance visitors' experience. Our operation adds value to the visitor experience in downtown Rockport and the beach Skip a few pages here. We are looking to have our attendance around 4,000 visitors a year, but for, so far this year, we have already exceeded the 4,000, with the current attendance being 4,114. We have also increased the free programming that is available to both the community families and visitors that come to Rockport. And also, I just wanted to add that we have been working well with the other attractions around Rockport, doing the summer science programs, summer Saturday programs, excuse me, where we recently hosted the last Saturday program and was well-attended. Thank you.
Rockport Fulton Chamber Commerce. Be sure and tell us who you all are.
Diane Probst, for a short while, president, CEO of the Rockport Fulton Chamber of Commerce. I have with me the interim coming on board, Beth Journay. She ran the Angleton Chamber of Commerce for more than 20 years and then went on to be the interim for the Beaumont Chamber and now is here with us for three to four months to transition through the period. Ms. Jumper took a position with Texas Tropical Trails. This is an experience that I think, the timing is not good, but the experience for her is exciting. So during Lady Bird Johnson's years, she developed the trails. There's a Tropical Trail, Independence Trail, and so on. So Sandy will be leading as executive director of the Texas Tropical Trails. So we're excited for Sandy. So with that, I'll turn it over to our interim, Beth Journay, to begin our presentation.
And as you know, in your packets, you have received a very robust 2022, 23 marketing and promotion plan with a strong media buying component.
Hi. Donna D. Tourism Development Council, an 18-member council representing of the community and the government entities, is committed to a full rollout for the coming year using all forms of medium in this plan. Thank you.
Don Huff would have liked to have been here but could not. She's worked with the creative material to get the colors right, to get the photos right, to get the imaging right, to promote our community with dynamic and on-point colors featuring beach, seafood, and fishing. And then continuing to use the find yourself in Rockport Fulton colors and that logo. Birding continues to be a highlight of both the fall and the spring migrations. It is so important for us to respond to the focus group material, and that's exactly what's happening there. So we're very proud of Dawn and her work.
Hello, Jonna Hill. I am the tourism coordinator, Sandy's replacement. We continue to attract media and social media influencers to our community to help garner exposure for our destination. And speaking on behalf of Diana Pardue and the marketing, we continue to meet monthly with staff of all local attractions for collaboration and coordination of calendars.
And speaking on behalf of Jatine Bakhta, who is our chair of the Hotel and Lodging Council, that group has grown to look for more efficiencies, has been working with Katie a lot in terms of the reporting process and the collections process of the hotel tax. And I think we've made some headway there. We look forward to that council doing more. Now, a new group that's forming, that's a subgroup of that, is the STRs, are the short-term rentals. And we have with us Laney Johnson, which is Summer Terrill, Ms. Fishing, Fishing Getaways, Ms. Katie's Fishing Getaways Assistant Manager. And they're going to be helping us form a short-term rentals council, so when y'all...
And the last thing we want to point out is that there's a journey exhibit that we had in the visitor center to kind of capture the fifth year of all the silver lines that are coming, coming our way, coming our way. So we invite you to that, it's going to be August 25 at 6:30, and it will be active visitors there, a full eight-hour exhibit featuring the good, the good things, the timeline of what happened, but also our... I think that will be exciting, and you'll hear more information about that. So most importantly, we want y'all to, you to all know how much we feel that it is not only a privilege but an honor to be the destination marketing organization and to carry out the marketing plan for this entire group effort. We will continue to take it very seriously and look forward to the future. Rockport Fulton Chamber of Commerce requests $369,000 to carry out this marketing and promotion plan. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, ma'am.
Event we all love, we're requesting $1,500 to assist, yes? Keep going? Okay. Okay. Advertising and promotion of the event, we have sent more than 3,000 postcards, and I'll show you an example of one of those postcards, to past attendees. And that has generated online sales almost of $16,000, and the event is still a month and a half away. All of the online sales are tracking where there are people from out of, out of state in some areas and then out of our area. So we're really positive that this is an event that's a true expenditure of the hotel tax. 90% of the people are coming and staying in hotels and rentals. So we anticipate over 5,000 people for that week. We, they love the hummingbird, that's the attraction, and then the fall migration of all birds. Our chairman for that is Melanie Wagner, and she is doing a fantastic job. The committee of about 12 people is strong, and we anticipate a great event. So we're requesting $1,500 for that.
Hi, Jordan Pilgrim, co-chair with Carl Hatman on Seafair this year, October 7th through the 9th. We are requesting 1,500 to assist with advertising and promotion of the event. We have been fortunate enough to secure Gary Moore Amusements for the carnival, which is, which is great because we did not have one last year. They will arrive on Monday, the week of Seafair, in order to go through a state inspection as they will be coming from Kansas. This will probably be the largest carnival Seafair has had in a long time. It has caused us to change the layout of the grounds, but we anticipate this will make it even better. Our featured act will be Corey Morrow Band on Friday night. We would like to meet with Chief Stevens to go over some entrances, exits, and traffic safety as we get a little bit closer. By your contribution of $1,500, we are able to advertise to San Antonians who want to come to the coast for the weekend. They contribute to the local economy by purchasing gas, souvenirs, eating at restaurants, staying overnight, et cetera. And we appreciate your assistance. Let us know if you have any questions. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council members, and thank you for this opportunity to request hot funds for this new fiscal year. And thank you for, Teresa, for holding this all together and being the glue. This year, we would like to request $50,000 in hot funds. This one include 24 for continued visitor services support for guests in the Fulton Mansion, as well as an additional 6,000 for new advertisement ventures in the Houston, San Antonio, and Austin areas, as well as 20 to restore the garden and grounds to pre-Harvey conditions. For the past few years, THC, that's the Texas Historical Commission, has been collecting data using cell phone geofencing to track people's movements, and this is the first year that at the site level, we've actually gotten these numbers. So as soon as a visitor comes to the mansion, we can use the technology to track the age, race, income level, zip code, educational backgrounds, as well as their length of stay at the museum and how long they stay in the Rockport Fulton area. Mansion visitation has held strong throughout the COVID pandemic and is back to normal and even better numbers than previous years. Last year, 2021, we saw 15,720. And as of today, for this year, we've seen 10,000. And as of today, for this year, we've seen 10,019, with about 60% of these coming from over 70 miles away. As far as the garden, between hurricanes freezes, floods, salts, deer, and the heat, like everybody else's, it's taking a beating. And we'd like to use these hot funds to restore it to its original grandeur by planting many of the species that George and Harriet had, as well as native plants and additional live oak trees around the site. This would cover installation and maintenance. We do not plan on replacing the palms that once stood out front because they were not there when the Fultons lived there. Thank you again for your support, and let me know if you have any questions.
Pan American Civic Association, the Labor Day Music Fest. Is that the folks that are not here? Okay. Rockport Yacht Club, Nautical Flea Market. Got quiet in here. Rockport Center for the Arts.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council and city staff. For the past 53 years, Rockport Center for the Arts has set the bar high by providing authentic and compelling cultural programming for our community and visitors from across the United States. For the past five years, we have placed thoughtful analysis into the synthesis of zip codes and visitor data that comprise our quarterly statistical reports to council. We have improved our marketing team, branding, and promotional strategies. We have used collected data and the changing face of advertising in the 21st century to craft publicity and marketing campaigns that bring demographics to the forefront in consideration of Rockport's cultural tourists. You can expect the same from marketing campaigns to the business traveler, an avenue that will bring tourism to our coastal community during the midweek market. We are partnering with local hotel properties to support all of our tourism activities. We have invested in a human capital plan by working with award-winning consultants of state and national renown to accomplish our goals. Our marketing team includes the following: nonprofit consultants, Lee Plus Associates, brand positioning Legend Labs, design creatives Snyder &amp; Associates, market analysis and media buyer Bucket Works, public relations Winfrey Media Relations, and Prokell Publicity Incorporated, videography and light and images Modern NSA, Ty Huzak Photography, spokesperson Kimmy Norville-Moak, TV partners Chris TV Channel 6, radio partners KDT Corpus Christi and the Rio Grande Valley, KVRT Victoria and KMFA Austin, online art content partner Glass Tire in Houston. Since 2017, we have added three new signature events to the existing repertoire that includes the Art Festival and the Film Festival. We remain cognizant of the important role tourism plays towards the betterment of our great city and the quality of life of our community. We have invested in state-of-the-art facilities, which open this fall. They comprise a 1.2-acre campus, 22,000 square feet of new space, and a 16,000-square-foot sculpture park that will unify our properties in the heart of downtown Rockport. Rockport Center for the Arts is very grateful for the financial support the City of Rockport provides annually through the Hotel Occupancy Tax Grant. As per the Texas Tax Code, Chapter 351, please accept our proposal for inclusion in the upcoming fiscal year budget, which contains the following requests: Categories 1, 2, and 3, promotion of the convention and hotel industry, $150,000; Category 4, promotion of the arts, $145,000. We look forward to collaborating with you in the co-management of the Rockport Conference Center. Thank you very much.
Arts District.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. In our six-year history, even with a major hurricane and pandemic, ARCAD has initiated, led, and achieved many community events and enhancements. ARCAD has been pivotal in attracting tourists with programs, initiatives, and partnerships such as the Vietnamese, American Veterans, and Hispanic Cultural Recognitions, Austin Street Murals, which create a magnetic selfie experience that is open 24 by 7 by 365, Second Saturdays, shopping tournaments, kite festivals, Harvey Block Party and Harvey Encore Block Party, Halloween in the District, Christmas in the District, the Rockport Fulton Art Colony Symposium, and various art exhibits, heritage... Excuse me, heritage events such as the Ford Model Ts, San Antonio Ragtime Society, and Stroll Through Rockport. Most of these events were free to the public, and some were attended by thousands of people. Some events benefited local groups such as Project Graduation, and angel trees supported over 40 Aransas County underprivileged families. For example, ARCAD initiated and led the Kite Festival for two years. After several pandemic-cancelled dates, ARCAD provided the City of Rockport with key contacts, layouts, and the event structure for a very successful handleover of the festival this year. ARCAD partnered with the Education Foundation on the shopping tournament for two years, bringing in an average of $50,000 to local businesses and 30 teams each year. ARCAD provided the Women's Lions Club with key information to assist their successful shopping tournament last year. Additionally, ARCAD has led many initiatives which enhance the district's atmosphere, such as leading district merchant meetings for collaboration and promotion of new ideas, replacing rotted city heritage signs with new signage, providing colorful flags that line Austin Street, and proactively providing needed bathrooms for our visitors during our busy summer months. ARCAD has led the Sales Tax Exemption Initiative on original works of art sold in the district and worked with the COG on downtown revitalization grants for district sidewalks and crosswalks. ARCAD's largest project goals are the restoration of the Rockport Railroad Depot, which includes a museum, the vision for the surrounding captive parking lot, and key marketing initiatives for Aransas County historical venues through the Passport to the Past Initiative. The Steve Russell Cultural Interface Bronze Sculpture Project, successfully managing and raising significant funding to date. The project is expected to be complete in 2023 and draw international visibility. ARCAD has achieved these accomplishments with one staff person. We have proven our ability to stay goal-focused and very successfully accomplished a variety of community-impacting and tourist-driven initiatives. Thank you.
RockportFulton.com.
Hey, hello. My name is Brian Grunberger. I am... I live at 1011 North Magnolia, Rockport, Texas. Been a resident here for 36 years. I run a website and a social media entity called RockportFulton.com, one word. Been doing it since 2017. We've grown pretty significant. I have... I reach over half a million people a month via social media. The website receives over 14,000 visitors a month. What we do is we provide information for tourism. We have a list of every business. Mainly, right now, we have basically every restaurant, every hotel, every vacation rental. We've partnered with VRBO, Booking.com, Expedia to drive the traffic. Basically, we provide, through our social media efforts, what we provide is really just, we reach people outside of the 75-mile radius. I know you guys have gotten my packet showing you all the statistics, the analytics for the site. One of the things that we've done, we've developed a virtual tour using a new technology that what it does is it takes photographs in a 360-degree mechanism. So what people do is when it... When people go to this virtual tour, right now, we're starting off at Rockport Beach. So basically, it shows a 360-degree view, an aerial view of Rockport, Little Bay. And within the photograph, we added some programming where you can actually embed other photographs, so to take you to other places. So it takes you to another place. So we've kind of, we've added, we've gone all the way from Fulton. We've added, of course, some things on the beach, the Marina area, the downtown area, and, you know, so just, we haven't even promoted that. And I mean, we've already had over, I think the last number I checked was like 29,000 visitors to the tour. So what we have is we have a lot of traffic, and we need... We'd like to expand that.
Texas Maritime Museum.
Thank y'all for having me. Good evening, Mayor. Also to all council members, specifically, welcome, Mayor Jero. I understand that you were sitting with my friends, including the Russo family during the Texas Wine Festival patron party, and I am sorry that I did not find you and introduce you to myself and my wife. I was being pulled in many different directions that night. So I was... I kept trying to find you, but it never happened. But anyway, thank you for... To the council for letting me present. I'm just trying to kind of give you an idea of where we're going with the museum. We're doing extremely well. I'm just going to give you some numbers. I know they get a little bit tedious and boring, but we're doing extremely well going into 2022 and 2023. We are getting back to where not... I shouldn't even say we're getting back to where we were. We are going above and beyond. If you want to go back to our records in 2016, you know, we had 11,000 people. You could... Well, round it up, we'll say 12,000 people. 2017, 11,000 people. Obviously, 2018, we took a hit because of the storm, but 2019, we went back up to 11,000 people. I project by the end of this year, we will be up to about 12,500 people. And the reason for this, the visitation records are... The reason the visitation records are increasing is we are changing the entire museum from top to bottom. I haven't been here long. I think you guys all know me, I'm a nerd. I'm a history guy, that's what I do. So I'm trying to turn the museum into a kid-friendly, family-friendly environment to where people can come right off the beach and enjoy it. For too long, the museum has been too focused on trying to keep it as this, just this collective of artifacts and things that you can only come in and view from a distance. I've got an eight-year-old son, and I run it by, everything by him. And if he doesn't approve of it, well, daddy, that's boring. Well, then it doesn't go in the museum. So I'm using him as kind of a guinea pig. So we've got new exhibits that are already in existence and some that are getting completed. We're rediscovering the Karanka, the first Texas Mariners. You know, we built a Karanka Wiki up, one of their huts. We're going to be building a dugout canoe. We're also exploring early Spanish colonization and going into, you know, 1519, the very first map of Texas. We've got this beautiful Yard Arm exhibit that was created last year in honor of Jack Lawrence, one of our longtime docents. And it's fully functional and kids, I could take 20 kids up there, and I can show them how to maneuver this thing and show them how difficult it is to actually sail a ship. And this is what brings people in and families in and people from distances. So for our first quarter for 2020, I don't have the quarters... Really? That quick? Can I have one more minute? I'll go very quick.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. I apologize. For the first quarter, we've had... I'm not going to go into the numbers. We're doing good. We're doing good. I'm just going to say we're doing good. The new exhibits are bringing people in, you know, for just, just for this time, just for right now in first quarter, even though we're technically in third quarter for our calendar and the county's calendar, we've got, you know, we've got, we've got 6.32% people coming in. For our Rockport Wine Festival that we had, 55% came in from 75 miles out. With all of these visitors, our memberships are increasing. Typically, we have about 1,000-plus people for the festival. Last year, we had over, well over 3,000. That's kind of an anomaly because it was right after COVID. This year, we had about 17 to 2,000. Those are record numbers that we have never seen before in the 24 years that we've been doing this festival. Again, this festival brings in more than half of our 75-mile visitor percentage. So we're doing good. We're getting, this festival is successful. The new exhibits are bringing people in. We're cooperating with other museums. We're bringing people into the museum. Obviously, COVID slowed us down, but now that we're back on track, we have already 3,300 people for our first quarter. We're projecting to have at least 12,000 people for the first fiscal year. Education camps are on. We have a new educator. Everything's going back to normal. The museum is moving forward. And so thank you for all your support. I won't go into the numbers since I've already run over time, but as I like to say to all my mariner friends, fair winds, following seas. Thank you for the support. I appreciate everything that y'all do for the Texas Maritime Museum. I will be here as long as y'all will have me.
City of Rockport Downtown Information Center and Restrooms.
Mayor, council, this will take about a minute, so I'll donate a minute to the chamber and to the museum. This is a request from staff to meet a need in the community, specifically in the downtown area. The request would allow the city to shut down, close down Main Street between Water Street and Austin Street to construct a, an information slash restroom facility that will serve all of downtown. And I believe the merchants are behind this particular request and be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Finally, City of Rockport Tropical Christmas, Kite Festival, Hoop and Crane Strut, and event support.
Sir, so this is, I'm Rick Martinez, your Parks Director. This is a request for some events that the Parks Department does, City of Rockport. Tropical Christmas has been going on for, before I even came to work for the city. It was called Something Different Then, but it's going on over 25 years now. It's grown. Used to be held at the beach. We now have it at the festival grounds. This includes a all-day event at the, at the festival grounds, a fireworks show, a parade. It's our biggest event held by the City of Rockport Parks Department. It brings a lot of people in as well. We've been growing this event. Obviously, Harvey kicked us there for a while, but it's gotten going again. Is that, is that my signal to shut up now? Oh. So again, it's been a growing event. We try to keep it interesting and continue to add some different things. One thing that was a real hit here a few years ago, when we brought it in with snow. We don't get snow down in this part of the country very often, but it was a really big hit for the kids. Last year was, I believe, our second year doing it. The snow melted pretty quickly. It was a hotter November, December 3rd or 4th, whenever that day was that we had the festival. But year before, it held on a little bit longer, just can't tell about the weather down here. But anyway, that, we want to add some more features that'll bring more families out. This is a family-geared event. Kite Festival, Jennifer touched on that. It was a really good success this year. We took that over. We plan to grow that event as well, add more stuff, and again, a very good, family fun The Hoop and Crane Strut, that's another one that's over 25 years old. It's, we, it's in conjunction, we actually do this... It's, we, it's in conjunction. We actually do this event the same weekend as Oyster Fest. So, uh, it brings in a lot of people and helps, uh, helps, uh, boost a, uh, a population of people in this. I don't know if the chief appreciates that or not, but that, that's right. The chief did win the race, but it, we, we, we had to do some things to kind of make that happen, so. We wanted to make him feel good about it. Uh, no, chief, great job, chief. Uh, but anyway, it's a fun event. A lot of people come out and run. We've got adults, there, there, there are children. It's just a really fun event. Again, Harvey kicked us on that one, but, uh, it's, it's back up and running and, and, uh, I believe this last year, we had close to 250 people. Our record is about 290. We, we want to get that number to 300 again this coming year, hopefully over, over 300. I'm, I'm sure that we can do that if we keep putting this thing on. Event support, that's, uh, uh, something that, uh, goes to support all of these events. Uh, we use a lot of our staff to help us, uh, support these events. Uh, we used to use a lot of volunteers, but again, after Harvey, it's been kind of, kind of hard to grab a lot of volunteers. They're busy doing, committing to other events and stuff and, uh, we, um, we use our pool staff as well on this, so we get, uh, uh, supported by this, by the, the event support money, um, for all these events. And we, you know, so we do a lot more events, uh, that are, that are, uh, funded in our general budget, but these are hot fund requests that we are, uh, asking the city to continue to support. Just very important that we get for this, uh, uh, this whole community.
Thank you, Rick. All right. Having heard all of these, it's decision time to talk about what we consider to be important, how important we feel things are that we need to deal with here.
Mayor, Council, as, as you go through this list and each of you make your, your, uh, your choices for funding, I'd ask you to, to speak fairly slowly so that we can, uh, type it in on the screen and it can be seen. So Kimberly, let me know when you're ready.
Can I do a point of information for everyone? Um, I just want to make sure that everyone is understanding that the council does receive a larger packet from each organization that sends these information in for us to, um, take in consideration, to give hot funds. So we do have about a week or two before we actually come to council to digest more information in just three minutes. I just want to make sure that information is sent out.
Good point.
Are you ready? I believe we're starting down on this end.
I think that talk slowly was more towards me than you're not. Um, I'm just going to go down, um, line by line here. So for the Rockport Fulton Chamber of Commerce, um, I had put allocate the full 369, 369,000. The Texas Maritime Museum, I had put down the full 75,000. The Bay Education Center, I had put the full 15,000. Fulton Mansion, I had put the full 50,000. The Culture Altruistics, or sorry, the Arts Center, I apologize. I put the full 295,000. For AC Council on Aging, I did the 5,000. Rockport Yacht Club, I did the 1,800. For Seafare, 1,500. Hummerbird, 1,500. Tropical Christmas, I did 70,000. The Public Art is for 5,000. Visitor Transportation, I did, I did zero because I didn't understand that one very much. The Event Support is for 30,000. The Rockport Culture Autistic, I did for 100,000. Contracted Services, the 17,244. The Kite Festival, 5,000. For the Makers Market, I had put zero. For the Whipping Crane Strut, I put 6,500. For the Labor Day Music Festival, I did the 5,000. For the rockportfulton.com, I did zero. And I think that's it. I did 5,000. Do you need any, do you want the Information Center?
Yes.
The 500,000.
Right, alright. Going through them. I, uh, funded all of them with a request, knowing that we would be under, what we received in hot funds for the year, uh, not including the 500,000, and we would be running that off of the fund balance and the hot funds. So I, I funded everybody's requests.
At the requested amount?
At the requested amount.
Okay, give us a second to enter those. Kimberly, do you need to read more? 500,000 on the Information Center or?
Correct. Katie, am I wrong on that? And there is no, there is no problem with, uh, funding the 500,000, the Information Center out of the fund balances, correct? The hot funds?
Correct.
Reserve funds, whatever you call it.
If you funded everything as you did, that would basically leave a fund balance of $1,174,000.
Or two?
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Alright, thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm going to, uh, rather than repeat everything that, um, Ms. Hatman stated, um, I agree, full funding, um, starting at the beginning. We'll stop at, fund 2075 Visitor Transportation. I'll fully fund that at 1,000 as requested. Event Support at 30,000. For Rockport Cultural Arts District, my recommendation is 80,000. I do appreciate all the great work that they're doing and hope that their program continues to grow. Um, but their request this year is well more than double of their previous funding, so my 80,000 would double their previous funding and I hope to see additional positive impact from that funding moving forward. Moving on, Contracted Service, full funding, Kite Fest, full funding. I agree with Ms. Hatman on Artisan and Craft Market for no funding. Uh, that is a for-profit, um, entity and, um, he's seeking, uh, essentially to double his marketing budget. And, um, I'd really like to see that event, um, kind of previous ability to double before we, we look at, um, growing it any further. It's a pretty big footprint as it is, but we appreciate Tom and his hard work. Moving on, Whipping Crane Strut, full funding. Labor Day Music Festival, zero funding. That is a nonprofit, uh, that appears to be in not good standing with, uh, the RRS. I hope that, uh, that's not fully, uh, true, uh, that that funding, uh, that organization is not local, nor would their funding stay local for their, their benefit. Moving on, Rockport Fulton, also zero funding again. The for-profit organization, um, who's earning ads off of that, um, that website. Uh, it is a great product and, um, I hope that he'll continue to, to, uh, expand that. Also full funding for the Downtown Information Center.
Just want to make sure we caught all of that. Kimberly, you have a question? Okay, Whupping Crane, Danielle, if I say something that's not correct, correct me. Whupping Crane, you funded it at the full 6,500?
Yes, that's correct.
Labor Day Music Festival, zero funding. RockportFulton.com, zero funding. And then the Information Center Downtown, 500,000.
That's correct.
Okay, I think we got you.
Board one.
Chamber of Commerce, 360,000. Texas Maritime Museum, 75,000. Bay Education Center, 15,000. Fulton Mansion, 50,000. Center for the Arts, uh, 295,000. Council on Aging Bonanza Bowl, 5,000. Flea Market, 1,800. Seafare, 1,500. Hummerbird, 1,500. Tropical Christmas, 70,000. Public Art, 5,000. Visitor Transportation, 1,000. Event Support, 30,000. Rockport Cultural Arts District, 100,000. Contracted Services, 17,244. Rockport Kite Festival, 5,000. Artisan and Craft markets, 60,000. Whupping Crane Strut, 6,500. Labor Day Music Festival, 5,000. RockportFulton.com, 75,000. And I'd like to see 600,000 made available for the Information Center. We good?
Did you say 600,000?
Yes.
Okay.
From the mayor, I have reviewed these things at some length and had some questions that I have made note of. Because of that, I have recorded full funding for most of these requests, but not all of them. Uh, concern I have is with pro, for-profit organizations. I have a concern that hotel motel tax money is used to improve or increase the value of a property that belongs to an individual as opposed to a nonprofit that stays with the organization and stays in our city. Because of that, all the full funding that I have put down, Artisan Craft Markets, zero. Labor Day Music Festival, zero. RockportFulton.com, zero. I hope you do very well with your business, but I don't see that as something that we need to fund with hotel motel tax funds. Fully funded the rest.
Okay, so Kimberly. Right. So the non, non-funding Artisan Crafts Markets? That is, um, then we've got, um, the Labor Day Music Festival at zero?
Yes, sir.
And the RockportFulton.com at zero?
Yes, sir.
On the Information Center, Mayor?
Yes, full.
Okay. Katie, Kimberly, all right, go ahead and scroll up to the top and let's look at that last column where there's a consensus. And basically the consensus says, if, if three of you agree on the value, it generates the word consensus. So, you, you're in agreement on all of those with the exception where it says none. And I would pay attention to the, um, Rockport Arts District because you all put a value there, but none of, none of them are the same. So you guys probably need to discuss that.
Can I go first on this one? So the 100,000 that I put on is, I'm looking at what they requested for last year and it's such a great difference, what they wanted from last year for this year and what we gave. Um, that's where my 100,000 came from. I'm not against fully funding them in any way. So I, I mean, I just, that's where my number came from.
I'm pretty much agreeing with what Andrea had to say. It's more than double what was asked before. I know that in there Jennifer wanted to hire another full-time. There's definitely enough money there for at least a part-time, if not 30 hours a week. I think 100,000 is more insufficient.
I'll be glad to move mine up to 100, um, but I don't think full funding warranted considering such a large jump from one year to the next. Ms. Day's done a great job, um, but funding another full-time position, um, I'm not sure that that should, should come so easily from hot tax.
So Danielle, you're saying you're okay with 100,000?
Yes, sir. I'll move back to 100.
I'm sorry, we're, we're not going to go back and go over again, Jennifer. Thank you, though. That's okay.
I'm good with the, my number came up fully from what, from allocated.
Okay.
74,000, I'd have to, I'd have to look. I can find it for you. Hold on. It's page 306. Uh, last year's funding, uh, was actually $40,000. That was what council funded. I think, I believe the ask was for 74,000 if I remember right.
Was allocated last year with the 40,000. That's the number I look at is what was actually given, not was asked. I apologize about that. Again, I don't have a problem fully funding it. I just, that's where my number came from.
My, my rationale on the whole thing is I look at all these organizations that we have been dealing with for years, and this is one of them. And in my opinion, most of these places have been very, very good stewards of the cities of the tax money that they get. And I realize that in the current economy and situation we're in in the world, things are tighter than they used to be. And I think that, among others, the Cultural Arts District has done a good job with what they have got in the past. And I was some concerned with the idea of spending 48,000 on salaries. And thought about that for a while because I don't think that's something we have made a general habit of. But I think that it's worth the effort when people have been good stewards of the money they had in the past. And so that's the reason I fully funded it.
With, with Danielle's movement to 100,000, that gave you consensus?
Anything else on this one? Anything else?
So if you guys are in agreement on the items that have consensus, I'd ask for a motion to fund, um, as. Okay, well, let's see. What else do you have here? Well, it's not in consensus, but leave that to you guys if you want it better or not.
So I had gave the 5,000. I know we had discussed this last year. And Rick, I remember you having a reason why we did the 5,000 because we used to help them out when they came downtown. For Labor Day Music Festival, I know we, you guys had said that you had, we had helped them in the past with running the, the festival.
That, that's correct. After, right after Harvey, they, when there was, uh, there wasn't a whole lot of things going on, uh, we did support this event, uh, helped them to, to kind of get things going and bring, get people back out of the house and give them something to do. So we did support it with a lot more than five grand. But again, that is for a, uh, it's a profited event now and, uh, you know, we helped them out for a couple of years.
Hello? I'll change my amount to 5,000 on that one.
My problem is still with the for-profit organization. I won't change mine.
Mayor, um, I also won't change mine. Their application says that they're a nonprofit. Public Record says that, um, their nonprofit status has been revoked. I believe their application, um, is not, um, as forthcoming as it probably should be. Um, uh, they operate as a for-profit event, and I'll say zero for funding.
That was maybe my next question on the application. It does say nonprofit, and that's where I was confused with the difference there.
Other application said not for profit, but they're, um, I don't think that's accurate. I think they are for profit.
Without the accurate information and without of that, I actually would like to change my amount back.
I believe in the paperwork that we had on there. It indicated profit of ten thousand dollars with some of that going to children's education. So it showed a profit on that.
I did look at his, the IRS filings. He still has not filed a nine ninety and been in existence for four years now. But his EIN does go to a C three, a five oh one C three. It does not, that's, that's what his EIN converts to.
So mayor, if I may, um, you know, admittedly, the information that's available through the IRS, um, can be inaccurate, but the current status of their EIN shows revoked for failure to file tax forms for the past three years. And that was as of two thousand twenty-one.
Where'd he go? He left.
Mayor, I, I see that you are now in consensus on every item.
Very good. Any other questions? Anything else we need to do on this particular item? If not, I need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the allocated hot funds as read. Each, you know? And make a motion to approve the allocation, or the hot funds to allocate for the Rockport Chamber of Commerce Marketing, three hundred and sixty-nine thousand. Let me see, do you have the, the end one there? I just want to make sure I have the right one. Uh, Texas Maritime Museum, seventy-five thousand. The Bay Education Center for fifteen thousand. The Fulton Mansion for fifty thousand. The Rockport Art Center is going to be for two hundred and ninety-five thousand. Council on Aging is going to be for five thousand. The Yawkport Yacht Club is going to be for eighteen hundred. The Chamber of Commerce Seafair is fifteen hundred. Chamber of Commerce Hummingbird for fifteen hundred. Tropical Christmas for seventy thousand. Public Art for five thousand. Visitor Transportation for a thousand. Event Support for thirty thousand. Rockport Culture Arts District for one hundred thousand. Contracted Services for seventeen thousand, two hundred and forty-four. Rockport Kite Festival is for five thousand. The Artisan and Craft Market for zero dollars. The Whooping Cranes Strut is going to be for sixty-five hundred. The Labor Day Music Festival for zero. Rockport Fulton dot com for zero. And then we have the Information Center Downtown is for five hundred thousand.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Not Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Next item on the agenda is to deliberate and act on appointment of council representative to the Ranges County Alliance Local Government Corporation Board of Directors. This came up because Mayor Pat Rios, who is no longer the mayor, had to go fishing and he went to Alaska to do it, and he wasn't available for a meeting, so it was time to replace him on the board. So I need a motion for someone to replace him on the, this board.
Mayor, do you, do you wish to, uh, sit on that?
I can do that.
I move to, uh, appoint Mayor Jero, uh... As a council representative to Ranges County Alliance Local Government Corporation Board of Directors.
I have a second. Any further discussion? Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four? Mayor, aye. I'm fourteen on the agenda to deliberate and act on, approve a modified organization chart and position change for the Public Works and Building and Development Departments. Richard?
I'll start this one and then Mike can chime in. This is something Mike's been working on for some time. And I realize that the timing with, with me coming up, departing may be an issue, but it is something that Mike's worked hard on, looking at. Mike's had a couple people retire from the city and they will be missed, but it's an opportunity to take a look at his organization within the city, restructure it to, to best meet the needs of the community. And this, the way it's presented to you, in Mike's opinion and mine, I, I've asked him some tough questions and gone through this. And I think the, the request is worthy and will provide a new, bottom line, the, the new position that's being added is an assistant director that will give Mike, um, basically three assistant director positions, one over utilities, one over streets and construction, and one over, uh, development. I think this is a good structure. It is not cost neutral, however, the, the actual cost would be about a six thousand dollar increase in cost to the city. That said, it will also allow for one of the positions currently under Mike to be more utilized by finance department as well. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. I'm not naming any, any people to positions at this point, just, uh, asking you guys to consider the, basically, creation of an assistant director position for streets and construction. Mike, anything else?
Mike?
This is a unique opportunity in a small, small depart- or a small, uh, entity such as the City of Rockport to advance careers for a few people and put people in line for the future. This is something that we've been working on for several months. I started this conversation prior to Kevin's departure. And, you know, we were looking at it last fiscal year. We brought it to the, the budget process this fiscal year with many meetings between myself, Richard, Katie, and Casey with the HR Department. We have to follow city policy, and we did some title changes. We had two administrative assistants, or excuse me, one administrative manager and one administrative assistant that retired. We did a reduction in a title change in one of those positions, and we left the other one the same. Uh, we changed the name of the street superintendent to a street production supervisor. Uh, we'll still have, we'll have an, an assistant director over streets drainage, construction, and support services. And we've had somebody basically functioning in that position for quite a while, and this will just, uh, clean up some things. Uh, in a small organization like this, if you look across the top, it's been said that, you know, people say we're top-heavy. Every one of those assistant directors are boots-on-the-ground types of folks, and they're out on the streets daily with their crews, managing and overseeing, and sometimes working with those crews. So, uh, I'm asking for your support in this. This is part of our recruitment and retention. Uh, we've got some folks that have been with the city, you know, nineteen, twenty years, ten, fifteen years, and this is an opportunity for those folks to advance their careers and finish out their careers with the City of Rockport. So I ask for your support in this.
Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Richard, you said this was six thousand dollar increase?
A ca- an additional cost.
Roughly, really, Mike, six thousand dollars?
I ca- I originally came up with the idea of about a thirty-two to thirty-four thousand dollar savings, but with the transition of some of the duties and responsibilities into the finance group, they asked for some support from utilities, and we can provide that support. And that support takes us over to six thousand. We can absorb that somewhere in the budget.
Really? Six thousand dollars?
I think we can.
Katie, can we absorb six thousand dollars?
They bribe me to say yes, no. Um, we can, it's somewhat of an immaterial amount, um, and by shifting people around and, um, when they do that, there is some savings in between those that retired and the, the moving up. If the internal people are the selected, if they come in from outside, we could actually not even see that.
Okay, so that would be a max of six thousand, is what we're roughly looking at.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I love this. This is, this, um, I mean, I know that, uh, Mike and everybody who works under him does absolutely fabulous work. They work real hard, and they want to put out a good product. So it looks like this may provide you a better flow for, for supervision especially.
I do, yeah, I do want to point out, like I said, one of them, there's a title change, and we, we have one listed here, and it says janitor. And I, I want to clarify something, that, that I don't like that title. Uh, I would like something like custodial service worker or something. And, uh, that activity is being done by city employees after hours paid at overtime wages, wage, wages, wages because of F S L A. And so we are paying, you know, quite a bit to have our employees clean this facility, the Laurel Street Facility and other facilities after hours. And with, uh, with the new city hall coming on board in the next eighteen to twenty-four months, we are looking at establishing a custodial staff, and that will become in the next fiscal year, possibly with, uh, you know, a request for additional personnel as needed. But this will get us started, and this will get us a full-time person, and it will, uh, free up some of the folks that are working overtime hours, even though some of them really like it and they like the hours. And some people come to us and say it's not fair that only a certain number of people can get those hours and others can't. But doing it this way would clean that up. And like I said, I, I'd like to work with, uh, Casey in the HR Department to ensure that we titled that position correctly.
I move to approve the modified organizational chart and position changes for the Public Works and Building and Development Departments.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or debate? If not, the motion is to be approved as written. Ward one?
Aye.
Ward two?
Aye.
Ward three?
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye.
Counsel?
City Council will hold an executive session pursuant provisions of chapter five fifty-one of the Texas Government Code in accordance with authority contained in section...
Um, mayor, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, reports from the council and whoever. I'm looking at my watch and not looking at the agenda down here anymore. Okay, reports from council.
Ward one, we've got, we've got, as usual, we have all kinds of stuff going on with, with it being summer and, um, I strongly urge everybody to shop local. Go down and, and hit your favorite places, look at some new places, look at some places you haven't been to in a while, and see what they have that you might, you might enjoy. Um, I know that, uh, Ward one is set to possibly explode, um, with, uh, opportunities for investment in business and all kinds of other things. I'm looking forward to, uh, working with our new EDC director on some things we can do in Ward one to bring some monies into us for a change. Maybe we can buy some drainage, drainage help, I don't know. Um, but things are looking up and things are looking good. City Rockport is in a good spot right now. Thanks.
Ward two?
Uh, thank you. Um, just, uh, sorry I can't be there with you guys today. Uh, it's my, my kind of one week of summer. I get to sneak away and appreciate tolerating me being able to join you remotely. Uh, want to thank Ms. Lanier. Uh, she is the individual who's requesting the cup from seventeen eighty-one. Um, I think that was a good adjustment to a unfortunate situation that, um, she was in and working with the HOA board, uh, hopefully can get, uh, the covenant amended as well, maybe come back at a later date for a full, um, uh, zone change. But again, thank you, Ms. Lanier. You're doing a great job and, um, look forward to continued progress to get that cup completed. Uh, beyond that, you know, Katie, uh, Ms. Jackson said, I mean, this is a great time to be in Rockport. Um, enjoy the rest of our summer, stay safe, and, uh, get those kiddos ready for school. It's coming up very, very soon. That's all, mayor.
Thank you. Ward three?
Nothing to report.
Ward four?
Every time I come up here, it's only going to be about the drainage until it's fixed. We're just still going up with the pipe. Um, it's supposed to go to open bid on the twenty-seven. Um, so that's going on open bids. Um, just keep an eye on it, and it's hopefully coming to council here in August. Otherwise, I have nothing to report. Um, thank you, everyone, for today, and, uh, just like Danielle said, stay safe. School's almost back in session. I know it can't come soon enough for some parents, but it's almost there. Um, just be cool. So thank you, everyone.
Mayor, if I may?
Sure.
Uh, apologize. Uh, Mr. Ward, is this your last meeting? Then I would like to thank you for your time that you, you dedicated to us for, uh, well, about a month, maybe, you know, about how long you've been here? Uh, thank you for, for coming and staying with us and, uh, trying to righten the ship, I guess, and get us going down the right path. And, uh, I really appreciate you and your time, and thank you.
I, I agree with you. I was going to tell you that we appreciate you very much. You, you have been a joy to work with, and you have a world of knowledge and have been just about as good a person to work with on a short order for me as I could have found or asked for. So I appreciate you very much. The other thing is I have been desperately looking for an ordinance to get it to rain, and I haven't found one yet, but I'm working on it. But I have nothing other than that. Uh, city council will hold an executive session pursuant to provisions of chapter five fifty-one of the Texas Government Code in accordance with authority contained in section five fifty-one point oh seven one, consultations with attorneys seeking the advice of an attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or a settlement offer and a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the government body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct and state bars of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter. Burnside Services, Inc., and Concho Street Drainage Project. We are in executive session. It is eight seventeen. Seven, there's no action be taken in the results of this executive session. I have a second. We're adjourned.